So, welcome, everyone. I'm Lucy Prashker, a resident of Alford, a mom. And I'm the Chair of the eight-town Regional School District Planning Board. And I just want to introduce everyone up here on the stage with me. All the way over is Colin Smith from Sheffield, Susan Smith, New Marlborough, John Silbert, Monterey, Nadine Haver, Sheffield. This is our project manager and head of our research team, Jake Eberwine, and Tara White, New Marlborough. And then in the audience, who will come up here at some point, is Bill Vogt of Sheffield. So, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I just have one housekeeping thing I have to do. We've got a quorum here of our Community Outreach Subcommittee, so I need to open that meeting officially and call for attendance. So, Susan Smith, Nadine Haver, I'm on the committee. Tara, here.
And Patrick.
And Patrick's here, in the room.
Here.
Okay. So, we've opened that Subcommittee. The decision before us is to be made in, what's it, 12 days? October 23rd for seven of the eight towns. And the town of Eggermont, as many of you may know, has scheduled their special town meeting for two days before October 21st. So, we're close to the date that you, as voters, will be making a decision on whether our two districts can do better together, what we currently do apart. That is the question boiled down to its essence. And before we get into the specifics of why our eight-town board thinks the answer to that question is yes, I'd like to turn the floor over to Tara White to talk a little bit about how we got here.
Good evening, everybody. For those of you who have heard this history lesson before, you're going to hear it again tonight, but for those that have not, here is how this all came about. In the spring of 2019, the Berkshire Hills School Committee sent a letter to the Southern Berkshire Regional School Committee, asking if they wanted to discuss the possibilities of merging the two high schools. The select boards of all eight towns were CC'd on that letter. The response from the Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee was not immediately positive. This led to the select boards in all eight towns deciding into September of 2019 to move forward with a town-led, rather than school-committee-led effort, since the Southern Berkshire Regional School District's school committee's response was less than positive and felt the merger was premature. All eight select boards responded that they wanted to move forward with the merger discussion. There was an elephant in the room, and that was the question: Did Berkshire Hills only want Southern Berkshire Regional School District to help them build their new school? At this first meeting, Charlie Ketchin from Alford asked that exact question directly to Berkshire Hills School Committee member Steve Bannon. Steve's response was absolutely not. We are now prepared to build on our own. You see Berkshire Hill had already made a regional agreement change that shifted more of the capital costs to Stockbridge. Stockbridge essentially agreed to pay twice as much so that the new school could be built. So Berkshire Hills is confident that they will build with or without Southern Berkshire. In January of 2020, the Southern Berkshire Regional School District Planning Board was formed formally, with specific membership requirements and a specific mandate. Each town would have three appointed representatives, with one being a current school committee member. And our job was, one, study the fiscal and educational advisability of establishing a regional district; two, develop an estimate of costs; three, assess the educational soundness, methods of financing, and any other matters pertaining to the organization and operation of a regional school district; four, report the findings, the board's findings, to the selectment of the eight towns. More than 30 volunteers have responded to the request of their select boards. These unpaid volunteers have participated in over 180 public meetings over the last three and a half years. Our state charge was not to plan the curriculum or design and engage a project manager and architect who would price out a new high school. In order to reach that cost, we have to know what we are building, how many kids, which vocational programs, and other design decisions to be decided by the new school committee. If we vote yes, that would be the next step in the process.
Yeah.
Then we'll hand to Nadine.
Yeah, before I hand the floor over to Nadine, just a few words about our ground rules tonight. We didn't know how many folks were going to be here. And so what we decided to do in terms of questions is to ask you to write out your questions on a three-by-five card, and they'll be brought up to us, and we'll respond to those that come from the floor. And for those on Zoom, the questions should go into the Q&amp;A. We're not going to be bringing people over into the panel. Your questions should go into the Q&amp;A, and we'll respond to them that way. So, that's the setup for tonight. So, over to Nadine.
Yep. I'm waiting for the technology to catch up. I want to thank Tara for that historical perspective. I think it's important that people know that we were formed by the select boards of the eight towns, that this committee was appointed by each of the individual select boards. I want to talk to you tonight a little bit about our challenges, and here they are up on the screen. Staggering declines in enrollment over the last several decades. And while our enrollment declines, our operational costs keep going up, as do the needs of the students. Flat state revenue, so with rising operational costs, we have rising tax assessments, as we all know. And that puts tremendous pressure on the ability of our school districts to provide our kids with a broad range of programs and the support they need, much less expand those offerings. So I want to pause here on enrollment declines, because these are really the foundational reason why we began this work: declining enrollment and increasing budgets, and the challenges ahead, and the solution we propose. So this chart that you're looking at here, on the far, my right, your left, shows what the declining enrollment figures have looked like. And these numbers come from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This is where the school districts report their enrollment numbers to the state, for state funding. So there's been a 37% decline from the year 2000 to today, from 2,684 students, combined districts now, to 1,680 students. And there is a further decline projected by Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, who does this kind of projection work for our county, but also by other organizations that are listed up here on the screen. The New England School of Development Council and the Mass Association of Regional Schools have confirmed that there is an expected additional decline, for a total of a 52% decline between the year 2000 and 2030, which is only about 67 years away, really. I hope to still be around by then. Anyway, these projections do come from authorities that we have come to trust, and many other aspects in our towns. And so I wanted you to know where those numbers have come from. And these are very challenging numbers. When you look at those, our finance committee concluded that our current model of operations in either school is not really sustainable, meaning that either taxpayers will need to agree to pay more, higher and higher rates of increase, or programs, and personnel will eventually need to be cut. This is when the board engaged Jake Eberwine and his team of experts to help us explore and present options to us, because none of us are experts in the educational analysis fields. And we have really been lucky to work with some of, what I feel are some of the brightest minds ever in this business. The models that we considered ran from a spectrum of the full combination of grades pre-K to 12, to a more formalized and specific level of collaboration. This chart here shows you the declining enrollment. The blue line here at the bottom is Southern Berkshire, and this runs from, I think, 2014. Is that right, Jake?
94, actually.
94. So this runs to 94 to 2023. And then the middle line is Berkshire Hills. And you can see that while there's a few little dips here and there between us, for the most part, both of the lines are going in the wrong direction. And the top line is the combination of the two districts together. We're just not having babies in South Berkshire. So, these are some very concerning charts for us as the Regional Planning Board when we see the declining enrollment.
Want to jump to choice?
Yep, let's go to choice. So there's been a lot of conversation about how important choicing between the two districts has been for the students. And I wanted you to see that choice has really shifted quite a bit. The top chart is Southern Berkshire's enrollment, and the blue numbers is what, the blue bar is what we've been receiving in students, and the red bar is what we've been sending out, or the kids choosing to go elsewhere. And then this chart closest to me is Berkshire Hills. So overall, you can see that Southern Berkshire has been trending towards more kids choicing out and fewer kids choicing in. And Berkshire Hills has been trending more towards kids choicing in and fewer kids choicing out. And again, these numbers all come from DESI, because those choice kids are reported to the state because of that $5,000 that gets paid for the transfer of the kids from one district to another. This is just a sort of a circle-type chart that shows you how the kids are already moving with their feet. We don't see a lot of hesitation, you know? If there's something they want elsewhere, they will go. And we can see that from this chart. So this last chart on school choice just sort of shows those numbers, in real numbers. And I just kind of wanted to show you that, you know, you can see how our percentage of kids choicing to Berkshire Hills is greater than their Berkshire Hills kids choicing into Southern Berkshire. And I really wanted to read this to you, but of course, my back is to it. In 2017, 90 students from Berkshire Hills chose to Southern Berkshire, and 93 chose from Southern Berkshire to Berkshire Hills. So that was a pretty close parity, really. But in 2023, 42 students chose from Berkshire Hills to Southern Berkshire, and 126 chose from Southern Berkshire to Berkshire Hills. So in conclusion, we kind of came to the conclusion that the recommended solution was to create a new pre-K through 12 regional school district, to be known as the Southern Berkshire Hills Regional School District, that maintains all existing elementary and middle schools as they are, but creates a single high school in a new state-of-the-art facility to be built on the Great Barrington campus. This new facility would have greatly expanded vocational, also known as Chapter 74, facilities and programs, and would be available to the high school students in all eight towns. The plan would be to offer six Chapter 74 programs, which would be twice as much as what we're currently offering in South Berkshire.
So we're going to hand out to Colin.
I wanted to address a little bit of the why. Why should we do this? There is some savings involved, as you can see. Putting the two school districts together, we project that the savings would be between $1.2 and $1.8 million. And that also takes into consideration the changes that we're projecting when these two districts go together. So the big change would be that Southern Berkshire salaries would need to be raised to be in parity with Berkshire Hills salaries. And so that's one of the big changes. There will also be, because we're putting the school districts together, there would be some things that would fall off. In other words, we're not going to need two superintendents, and we're not going to need the structure of two school districts. So there would be some savings in that. I can't sit here and tell you that it's going to be exactly like that. I'm a numbers guy, and I will tell you that of all the conversations we've had in our three years of meetings, all the number crunching we did, all 24 members of the committee participating in what-if questions of the consultants, that we thoroughly went through our projections, and I personally feel comfortable with what we came up with. And I think the rest of the committee members would agree with that, that the numbers for the operating projections, the operating budget projections are solid. And we were working with historical numbers. We took Southern Berkshire's historical budgets and Berkshire Hills' historical budgets and tested them through all of our modeling. The other thing that we would see a benefit in is the students, and that's really what this is about. So the students now would be the high school students. Elementary is going to stay the same, keep that in mind. So the elementary kids will stay in the schools that they're attending now. But the high school students would be combined into one high school, and that's going to allow them to have more choices. The things that I think about, and this is me as a parent speaking, are our students in our community have a wide academic breadth of their interests. So not every student wants to go to college. Not every student wants to go, just, you know, there are students that want to take advanced classes, there are students that want to learn a trade. So to be able to offer all those things, we do have to have a critical mass of students. And particularly in Southern Berkshire, that's hard. We have about 27 students in the class right now, approximately. That's unusual. It's, the class would be 40, normally, it's about 40 in each of the grades for high school. At Berkshire Hills, it's in the low 100s. So you put those numbers together, and now we have a critical mass. We can offer AP classes, we can offer the early college programs that Southern Berkshire has, we can offer some of the Vo-Tech that we've been dreaming about and really need, and some of the technical training, even business classes, finance classes, for those kids that don't necessarily want to pursue college. And our kids in our community, some of them are not pursuing college. All three of my nieces attended this school, Southern Berkshire, Mount Everett, and they, none of them went to college, and they're all working in the community, and they all had to figure it out on their own. One is in finance, one is in healthcare, and one is in retail. So we do owe it to our kids to offer them not just college programs, but also some of the technical training. Last, you know, I just want to say that pooling all of our resources, not just the educational, but sports and after-school programming, all of those things offer the students more than they might have right now in each of their individual districts. The sports are similar in both districts, but there are some that are different. Hockey and swimming are some of the ones. And then also having the kids together, it gives them, you know, that critical mass, it also gives them other opportunities to participate in ways that we haven't even thought of today. So putting these districts together, the new school committee may come up with ideas on what they think is appropriate for this new group, and I think it's going to benefit our students. And that's really important. That was one of the biggest motivators for me to join this committee, because I thought we could do better for our students. And so that's the why we want to put these school districts together, why we're recommending that to the select boards.
Pass to John.
John?
So, I want to address this slide first with a comment that we are creating a new district. We have not viewed this as a merger so much as an opportunity for future parents, students, and educators to imagine the next 50 years of education together. Many, many people will participate, but in some ways, I'm most excited for the high school students, who will have a chance to build their culture and their community in their own image. Second, I want to stress that this is a regional issue. Individual towns will vote, a new district will be formed, and two existing ones dissolve.
John, I'm sorry, can you just bring the mic a little closer to you? Thanks.
But the solution we seek is regional. We are small and growing smaller, but there is strength and sustainability in numbers and in joining together. Third, I want to remind everyone that this isn't a vote for the past, or for today, or even for the near term. The Southern Berkshire Regional School District was formed 70 years ago, Berkshire Hills soon after. So this is a vote for, at minimum, a 50-year future. A vote for everyone presently involved, but mostly on behalf of families who may move here in 10, 20, or even 40 years, and for children who will be born of parents who are now kindergartners. So this is a vote for them, for future students, parents, district employees, faculty and administrators, we don't know, but who are relying on us to make the best decision for them. Our two districts have served our students admirably. No one has failed to educate. But past performance, as they say, does not guarantee future results. There are moments when you have to anticipate, moments when you have to invest in the future, and this is a very critical one. I understand some voters look at the creation of a new district as a gain, others as a loss. Really, it's both. We will lose some of what we separately have, but we will gain a long-term future together. What I ask of those who are invested in the present district configuration is to remember that we've done this before. We created the Southern Berkshire Regional School District from five towns, all with separate schools. 70 years ago, Monterey, New Marlborough, Eggermont, Sheffield, and Alford decided to put their self-interest aside, their nostalgia, their history, and bet on the future, even sacrifice for it. We have this opportunity now to do this again with our neighboring towns, and I hope that this is the consideration uppermost in your minds when you vote. All right. I'd like to take a couple of minutes to talk about the school committee governance. Our eight towns vary widely in population, from Alford, the smallest with 486 residents, to Great Barrington at over 7,000, and Sheffield at about 3,300. The planning board felt strongly that if we are going to join together to form a new region of eight towns, we should have a governance structure that reflects a united region view, rather than a structure that is weighted according to relative town size. And so this is where we landed: a school committee of 11, with members elected district-wide, as they are now in the two districts. This is really important, as you hear about all the decisions that future school committees will need to and should make: about curricula, about educational approaches, about early college for all, about capital projects, about amendments to the regional agreement, and the like. Southern Berkshire town residents will hold a majority on the school committee, six to five. But what we anticipate, based on the way our school committees make decisions now, is that those school committee members will make decisions based on what's best for the kids in all eight towns, not based on what is best for their individual towns. All right, transportation. When we first began this work, we worried that transportation might be our biggest challenge. It turns out that it wasn't true, and here's why. First, the model keeps elementary and middle school students where they are, so the time spent on the bus by those young kids would either stay the same, or if a family opted for a school in closer proximity than they currently attend, it would be shortened. Second, elementary school students from Southern Berkshire towns would no longer have to ride the bus with high school students, because with more kids and aligned bell schedules, we would have a two-tier system for all elementary school kids, rather than a one-tier system in Southern Berkshire. While some high school students in Sheffield and New Marlborough would have longer bus rides, our independent transportation consultant believes that with a relatively modest investment in some additional vans, maximum time on the bus for all students could be reduced from one hour to 45 minutes, and most students would have rides shorter than 30 minutes. Many will also drive, as they do now, obviously, the high school students. Our current provider had some concerns about meeting these preference metrics, but that's what our expert tells us, and I'm sure that everyone will do their very best to work on, work with us to make this happen. Next. All right, school buildings. First, just as a reminder, the elementary and middle schools stay as is, and Mount Everett will house middle school students along with New Marlborough. If there is additional space at Mount Everett, there may be opportunity for expanding other services and programs for students in all eight towns, such as special education, alternative education, English language learner services, and even adult education. And just a reminder, the proposed plan does not close the Mount Everett Undermountain facility. The new high school will be built on the Great Barrington campus for a few reasons. Mount Everett is not large enough to hold all the high school and existing six through eight students. To rebuild Mount Everett would require application and partnership with MSBA, and Great Barrington is way ahead of us on that, so it would take years to do it here. While Monument isn't perfectly centrally located, it is far closer to the geographical center than Mount Everett, and this will help with transportation. Also, I want to stress, and people have said this before, this is not a takeover. If we don't move forward together, Berkshire Hills will vote to build their own high school without us. They will succeed in planning for the long-term future education of their students, Southern Berkshire will not. Moreover, no one is being absorbed. There is an opportunity, this is an opportunity, for all eight towns to form and operate a new district. Okay? We're doing this together. There are no outsiders, no others, making decisions for us. I cannot stress this enough. We are doing this together, and it's very important to understand that nobody is losing control, we're just all doing this together.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John. So now we're going to get to the titillating topic of our regional agreement. I'm glad I've got the owl microphone for that. And some of you may know that on September 27, a presentation was made on the regional agreement by Renee Wood and counsel for the Southern Berkshire Regional School District, but we weren't permitted to present on the regional agreement that evening, or even ask questions. And there was quite a bit of information that was presented that was incorrect, and so I'm going to take the opportunity now to correct that information. But... But before I do get into the specifics of the provisions, I just want to step back for a moment and talk about what a regional agreement, any regional agreement, is designed and permitted to do, and what it's not. So a regional agreement is a governance document. It addresses how we govern ourselves, like our school committee composition. It addresses how we assess our member towns, our assessment methodologies. It defines the processes we use for determining budgets, for incurring debt, for closing schools, for adding members, for allowing members to withdraw, for amending the agreement, and things like that. So the regional agreement dictates the process for making most decisions, not the decisions themselves. Those decisions are and must be left to future school committees, elected, at least in our district, district-wide, at biennial elections, district leadership, and state law, and other mandates, all of which obviously change over time, which is exactly the reason why you can't bake those things in to a regional agreement in perpetuity. I would guess that all the educators in this room, if there are any educators in this room, would agree that it is a very bad idea to restrict the ability of a school district to evaluate new curricula in a regional agreement. And I doubt, we doubt, that any such restriction would be approved by the commissioner of education. Similarly, regional agreements do not and cannot dictate things like pay. Salaries are negotiated in a collective bargaining setting. They can't, they can't dictate time on bus. Those things are determined every year based on student enrollment and where they live. And they don't dictate class size, which also changes year to year, based on grade size offerings and what the kids select for their courses. Regional agreements also don't dictate district or school policies. They do not dictate improvement plans or practices. They do not dictate budgets or contracts. All of those decisions are made every year, throughout the year, and throughout the life of a district, by school leadership and school committees, based on the needs of the students, with those decisions informed, we hope, by educational best practices, financial resources, and other things that necessarily change over time. So that's the background on what regional agreements do and do not cover. So let's look at the things that do belong in a regional agreement, and the questions that we've heard about those provisions. So first, I want to begin by letting folks know that we spent over 10 months, our 24-member board spent over 10 months going through the substantive provisions of the regional agreement, section by section. It's a very methodical approach. And the way we did it was, we'd talk about the issues, we would debate and deliberate the issues, and when the issues were significant, we would usually wait at least one meeting before we would take a vote on that particular provision, so that we could think about it, let it process, ask any additional questions we have, come back as a 24-member group, talk about it again, and then decide. It's a very methodical process. It was very collaborative. Almost every vote was either unanimous or near unanimous. Even those who oppose merger participated in this discussion, and in most cases, agreed on the provisions that end, ended up in the regional agreement that's before you. So I think that's really important. The other thing that's really important is that we worked very closely with the experts at DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the experts in regional agreements, going through these provisions, section by section. They were very much engaged in the process. They gave us lots of great suggestions. They asked us to include things that we hadn't thought of before. It's a very modern, and it's a very comprehensive agreement. It is a solid document. And we got an email from DESI at the end of this process confirming that they were good with the agreement. And the language they wrote in the emails up on the screen, "Should the member towns approve the agreement, we will be able to provide a positive recommendation to the commissioner for approval." So DESI has said, "This is a good document. Important to know." Okay. School committee composition, John has spoken to it already, but one thing I, I just want to mention is that the last time I was here, when Renee Wood was presenting the school committee, the school committee's view, or her view, on the regional agreement, she suggested that we have a different school committee composition that would be based on the relative sizes of the eight towns. She has since withdrawn that suggestion, and I hope that puts that issue to bed, because obviously, from the perspective of the Southern Berkshire towns, it's much better to have a majority, six of the eight members would be resident in Southern Berkshire, than the six of the 11, I'm sorry, did I say eight? Six of, six of the 11 members would be Southern Berkshire, whereas if we had a proportional system, we would have a minority, right? Because the Berkshire Hills towns have a majority of the population. So I hope that issue has now been put to bed. It seems to have been withdrawn at the Eagle Forum last week, on the 4th. All right, so next issue, choice. Choice within the district to go to the school that you want, right? So at the meeting on the 27th, this is the language that was put up on the screen. "District students shall attend the school in closest proximity to their residence, with transportation provided by the district as required by law and school committee policy." Dot, dot, dot. Well, what was the dot, dot, dot? The dot, dot, dot is really important. This is what it says in that provision, except, except, during the transition period, students who are enrolled in an elementary school that is not in closest proximity, so let's take my town, Alford. The elementary school in Great Barrington is a lot closer to Alford than the elementary school down here. So, I'm a parent in Alford, I have a child at Undermountain, and the school in closest proximity would be Muddy Brook, but let's say, I don't want to change. I don't want to take my child out of Undermountain. I want to stay there until they finish elementary school, or I want to stay there until they finish middle school. This provision, this except provision, allows you to make that choice as a parent. So even if a school is not in closest proximity, if you have a child already in elementary school, in a school farther away from you, you can keep your child there through elementary school, and actually through middle school. You can elect to keep your child there. Same for middle graders. They can stay in their middle school, even if it's not in closest proximity. So that's an important exception. Also, there's an exception for emergency placements, so the superintendent has discretion. You can imagine, for example, if there's a flood in one school, and the superintendent needs to move the kids temporarily into another school, the superintendent needs to have that ability. Okay, another provision not shown to you on the 27th, which is very important, is that we also have the ability to have intra-district choice. In other words, you can, as a parent, elect to send your child to a school not in closest proximity, even if you're not in that transition period, right? Even 10 years later, after the transition is over, and everyone's through elementary school and middle school. If you live in Alford, and you still want to send your child down to Undermountain, even though it's not in closest proximity to where you live, you have that choice, subject to seat availability, which will be determined annually. So there is intra-district choice available, even outside that transition period. And that's really important. And also, if, if the district elects to have inter-district choice, right? Take kids from other schools outside our new district. The parents within our district have first dibs on those seats that are available in the school. So they will have priority over kids outside the district if they want to send their kid to a school that is not closest to their home. So that's important. And also, there's the ability for siblings to have that priority choice as well, even outside the transition period. So, very important that we built in a lot of provisions in this agreement. You won't find that in any of the existing district agreements. We built in a lot of provisions into this agreement to provide parents and students with choice as to which schools they want to go to within the district. Now, the opponents in their opposition literature ask, "Why are we giving parents this choice? Why not force the kids in, for example, Alford and Monterey, who live much closer to the Berkshire Hills schools, to continue to go to a school that's farther away for their elementary and middle school children? Would that be the way to honor parent choice? To force parents in Alford and Monterey to continue to send their kids down to Sheffield if they'd rather send them to Great Barrington? I don't think so. What about transportation costs? Wouldn't that just drive up our transportation costs? And what about our shared goal of reducing fossil fuel emissions, right? Busing kids farther away to go to school, just to maintain, I don't know, the status quo in the existing schools doesn't seem to make sense. So, attending the school in closest proximity is the method that makes sense, so long as we build in these exceptions, which we did, and the choice options for intra-district choice. Okay, so that's number one. Number two, amendments to the agreement. And I, I think this is really a fascinating issue. We had a lot of very interesting discussion about this during our planning board meetings, about whether, if we want to amend the agreement, should that require, we all agreed it should require two-thirds of the school committee, so a high bar for an amendment to the regional agreement, for it even to get out of the school committee. But then the question was, how many of the towns need to agree in order to amend the agreement? And there were different possibilities. It could be simple majority, it could be two-thirds of the towns, it could be three-quarters of the towns, or it could be all of the towns. And we discussed all of those options. And we ended up with two-thirds majority of school committee, three-quarters of the towns, for an amendment to the agreement. We thought that made the most sense for an eight-town district. Because once we make the decision to join, we didn't think it right that one of our smallest towns, and I'll choose my town again, Alford, would have the right to veto the will of the other seven towns. That's where we ended up. That's actually the way it works under the US Constitution. And we thought, the US Constitution model wasn't a bad model for our regional agreement, right? Under the US Constitution, in order to pass an amendment, you need two-thirds of the House, two-thirds of the Senate, and three-quarters of the states. And if we didn't have that, if we required unanimity to amend the US Constitution, I'm not sure many of the women sitting up here today would be sitting here, because I'm not sure we'd have the vote. Right? So, so we thought it was a good system for us, for the regional agreement. Okay, next, contribution of assets and liabilities to the new district. We've heard concerns, particularly from folks in the Southern Berkshire Regional School District, that if we join this new district, we're going to be giving up, we're going to be giving up our campus. I want to assure you, we are not going to be giving up anything. The whole idea of this merger is that we will be getting more. We will be pooling our resources, our assets, our liabilities, together, and we will have more. The campus will be right here to serve the students of the new district, including our elementary school students and our middle school students. They're still going to be coming here, they're still going to be attending school here. We also hope that we'll be able to use some of the available space to perhaps offer adult education, more early childcare, other uses that the district decides makes sense, if we have the space available. And if there were ever a time, and I doubt there will be, but if there were ever a time that the school committee of the new district determined that any part of this campus should be sold, the proceeds of that sale would go back to the five-member towns who invested in this property prorata, according to the investment they made. That's how the regional agreement works. You're not giving up any value. You still have that value. It's going into the new district, as are the campuses of Berkshire Hills, with their two new brands, brand-new schools, and the third school about to be built. It's all going to be together in the new district, and if any school or property were ever sold, it would be returned to the member towns proportional to what they invested in that property. So you're not losing any value. Very important. There was a question about OPEB liabilities. Bill Vogt's going to speak to that in a little while, but again, you're going to hear, "We thought about it, we studied it, it's not an issue here," and Bill will explain why that is. Leases. This is, this was really an interesting discovery we made, when we learned that there are no leases for either the Town of Egremont School, or the school in New Marlborough currently. There are no written leases, at least none that anyone could find. That's pretty extraordinary, that we have, we're using buildings that we don't own, and we, as a district, don't have a written lease that gives us the right to continue to use those buildings. That was a shock to me, and it was a shock to DESI, that we currently don't have leases for these two buildings that we don't currently own. So our regional agreement says, "We need to have leases." And why do we need to have leases? We need to have leases so we can protect our ability to continue to school our kids in those two town-owned buildings, in Egremont and New Marlborough. We need leases to protect our ability to keep those schools open. That's the whole point. So for those who think that this lease provision is some sort of secret plan to close down those schools, it's exactly the opposite. Those lease provisions are there to protect our ability to continue to keep those schools open, right? And not have the towns have the ability to say to us, on 30 days' notice, "You're out." Which is where we are today, with no leases. So whether this merger goes through or not, this school district needs to get leases in place for New Marlborough and Egremont. Okay, school closure. Again, I'm told, I'm not a social media person, but I'm told that there's a lot of chatter on social media about the likelihood that with this merger, it's more likely than it is currently that the smaller schools that aren't owned by the district that the smaller schools that aren't owned by the district would be closed. It's actually the opposite, again. We've built into the regional agreement more robust process that needs to be followed before any, either of those schools could be closed. And it's so robust, the process is so time-consuming and involved, that the representatives at DESI, when we showed them the long list of things that has to happen before it could even get to the towns to vote on whether or not to close either of those schools, the representatives said to us, we've never seen anything like this. We've never seen a list this long. We've never seen so many obstacles put in the way of closing schools. Are you sure you want all of that there? And we said, yes, we're sure we want all of that there. Because we want to keep those schools open, and we want to protect as much as we can without saying it will never happen. Because of course, currently, in your current regional agreement, it can happen, right? Four out of the five towns can vote to close either of those schools right now. We're not going to make it impossible, but we made it very, very hard. And again, that's because our plan includes keeping those schools open. Okay, debt approval and transition committee. So again, I've heard a lot of concern about how the vote goes. Remember, we have a vote on October 23rd, October 21 in Egremont, but October 23rd for the other seven towns, on whether or not we're going to join together and form a new eight-town district. And in order for us to form an eight-town district, a majority in each of those eight towns has to vote yes. To get eight towns to agree to something, you have to have eight towns saying yes, we agree to a new agreement. There's a second vote that happens. We've built in what I call an unwind provision that requires that in order for this new district to become operational, and the date we think the operational date will be is July 1, 2026, when the new district really is born and starts educating students, born in that sense. In order for that to happen, there has to be approval of the debt required to construct the new high school, right? And if that vote fails, all of this unwinds. So the new district goes away. The existing districts continue on, and the regional agreement is terminated if that debt approval vote is not a yes vote. So the question is, how does that voting work? Is that all of the towns, or is that something else? And the answer to that question is that there are two methods that are possible under the statute, under the law, for approving debt. And you can choose either one. So the first method is you have a majority of the people across the district voting in favor. And if you have a majority of people across the district voting in favor, the debt is approved. That's method number one. Method number two is more like what we're going to be doing on October 23rd, which is you need to have a majority in each of the eight towns voting yes. So what does our regional agreement provide on how that vote will happen? It leaves both options open to the school committee. They can choose one or the other. But the default provision is majority of the, majority across the eight towns. That's the default provision. But the school committee can decide by a 2/3 vote, we don't want to go with the default. We want to go with majority in each of the eight towns. So it's up to the school committee to make that decision. So do you have the slide with the numbers, the cost per town for the new high school? Because what we've heard from those asking questions, good questions, legitimate questions, is, well, if it's a majority across all eight towns, isn't Great Barrington going to sort of outvote everybody and sort of minimize the value of my vote in Alford, for example, or somebody else's vote in Monterey or Stockbridge? And in asking yourself that question, I want you to look at this slide. What?
It's not sharing at the moment.
It's not sharing? Okay, well, this is a slide we put up at the forum on October 4th. And it's really important because we hear this number, $100 million for the new high school, or maybe it's going to be $110 million, or maybe it's going to be $120 million, or maybe it's going to be $140 million. Sounds like a really, really scary number, especially for folks in Southern Berkshire because we're wondering, we've got this nice high school here. Why are we taking on that additional cost? Well, the way we've allocated that cost is such that in the five Southern Berkshire towns, the annual cost of that new high school is really, really modest for an average homeowner. So for example, in Sheffield, for someone with an average-valued home in Sheffield, the annual cost of that new high school is $32.79. Think about that. $32.79 a year is the annual cost, assuming a value, assuming a construction cost of $100 million, interest rate 3.25%. So people will say, well, but what if it costs $120 million? What if it costs $130 million? What if the interest rate is another 1% on top of the 3 and 1/4? You can do the arithmetic. Say it's 50% more than what we're estimating. And by the way, Tom Burkle last week said he thought our estimate was reasonable based on the information currently available to us, the $100 million cost. He said that at a finance committee meeting. But even assuming we're 50% off, right? We're 50% too low. Take your $32.79 and add 50% to that. That's 16 bucks. That's what it would mean to you if it were 50% more expensive, and you can do the same arithmetic with your various towns. So when you look at that and you look at what Great Barrington will be paying, an average homeowner in Great Barrington will be paying if it's 50% more expensive, who's going to balk at the 50% increase in the price? Is it going to be someone in Sheffield, or New Marlborough, or Monterey? Or is it going to be a resident in Great Barrington, who if you add 50% on to the $350, you get to a really big number? So I think this concern that Great Barrington is going to outvote us and ram a really expensive building through, it's just not, it doesn't fit with the numbers. That's not a realistic conclusion based on those numbers. All right, the last thing, am I okay? The last thing I wanted to talk about is the transition school committee. Because we've heard a lot of concern about this transition group that's going to come in and make all these decisions. So what's really important here is the transition committee is a school committee just like any other school committee. It's not some foreign animal. It's not some alien. It's a school committee, and it represents our community. And it's going to be composed of the same people. We're going to have the same 6 to 11 majority, Southern Berkshire town residents, as we will with the school committee once we're operational. So it's just a school committee, no different from any other school committee. While initially, it's appointed by the select boards and members of the existing school committees, just like it works now, by the way, for school committee seats that become vacant before the end of the term, the transition school committee members will be elected at our next biennial election, which is November 2024. So there's really no other way to do this other than to appoint until we get to our biennial election in November 2024. And again, that's the way we do it with our school committees now. It's in your regional agreement right now that when there is a vacancy on your school committee, there's an appointing authority that appoints a school committee member to fill that open slot until the next biennial election. It's the very same process, no different. I saw a chat on the 27th that said the regional school district planning board appoints the school committee members. That's completely wrong. That's not so. The appointment is done by the select boards together with existing school committee members. So exactly the way we do it now, no different. So that's the regional agreement. Happy to answer any questions when we get to the Q and A on any other concerns you have about the regional agreement.
I'm going to jump over to finance with Nadine.
Let me get the owl.
Sorry, I should have run that over.
Your slide presentation. I can bring my, I can my neck.
Doesn't really work me too well.
Sorry, I just want to make sure I have the slides that you're going to see in front of me because the cranking of my neck wasn't very good. Sorry, can you hear me now?
Bring that a little closer to you.
Can you hear me now? Good. I just wanted to make sure I have the slides as you're seeing them because cranking my head was a little uncomfortable prior. So I want to talk to you. I was chairman of the finance subcommittee, which met oodles and oodles of time. We started out meeting monthly. We pretty quickly went to every two weeks, and then we went to every week because there was a lot of information coming out. And we found that waiting two weeks was even too much time with our questions. So we started meeting weekly. For 10 months, 11 months, it was a lot of conversation. The finance subcommittee had five regular voting members. But I want you to know that 10 people from the regional planning board came together. So there was the five that were appointed to serve on that subcommittee, plus five others who listened in and participated in the conversation. And while that was a little bit unusual, we thought it was really important for all the towns to have a voice in the conversation about how the finances were going to work. So I just wanted to give you a little background on that. So I want to talk about how school assessments are put together because that's what we're going to get into now, and that can get into the weeds a little bit, as we say. School financing, school assessments are based on really two things. Operating expenses, which are made up of operating, which is your daily expenses, your salary, your heat, everything your student needs all go into operating budget. Transportation, which we know is the busing, and then non-debt capital, meaning capital improvements that are worked into the budget. Here at Southern Berkshire, I know that our superintendent puts in about $500,000 a year into the budget to do ongoing maintenance. So that's what makes up operating expenses. The second part of a school assessment for a town is the capital expense. And the capital expense is the new high school, existing debt, which we here in Southern Berkshire have some existing debt for our roof and boiler. It's coming to a conclusion, but we're still making payments on that. And then any future debt down the road, 10 years, 15 years. A school needs a new roof, or a boiler, or whatever. Anything that's going to be financed ends up going into the capital expense. So let's talk about the methodology for apportioning out your assessment. There's two parts to your assessment. Part A is what the state says a town's required local contribution is. And that's calculated by DESI, and it's based on your enrollment and the wealth of your community. And I don't know what else goes into the black box at DESI, but the state tells us what our share per town is. And then there's part B. Part B is what we pay over and above to educate our students, the required minimum. Both districts spend more to educate our children than the state requirement, which is probably a really good thing because the state requirement is pretty low, and I don't think the kids would get near enough what they need. So part A is the state's requirement, and part B is the part that we spend over and above what the state requires. We have set up a, what we call a smoother, to help the transition of putting those two things together and assessing them out. It's called a safety valve. And currently, in Southern Berkshire, we have something called the five-year rolling average. You might remember a few years back, we amended our regional agreement because towns were seeing these spikes in their assessments changing. And so to help towns budget, the regional agreement was amended to allow us to use a five-year rolling average. So it kind of smoothed out those ups and downs so one town wasn't getting a huge spike. The safety cap ensures that no town's operating assessment plus transportation and non-debt capital increases more than 2% over the total assessment increase for the district in any given year. That doesn't control the budget. It just controls how much the assessment can go up or down. The 2% cap gets added to what the budget increase is going to be. So the next example I'm going to show you is using our operating budget. Let's assume there's a 1.2% increase in the budget for that particular year. If we did not have this 2% safety cap valve, this safety valve, you would see that the Southern Berkshire district's payment would shoot up. Every one of us would go up. 5.9% for Alford, 17.5% for Egremont, 8% for New Marlborough, 12.6% for Sheffield. All of our assessments would go up. Well, that wasn't very agreeable to the Southern Berkshire towns, seeing that the Berkshire Hills towns would go down. So by imposing this 2% safety valve... Jake, can you give me the next slide? That shows us that what we have here is bringing things closer to the middle. The green line is now where we all are, where there's no more than a 3.2% increase for any of the Southern Berkshire towns. It's bringing us down and them up. Anything that's over and above that would be passed on to the Southern Berkshire towns that's over the 3 and 3.2%, gets distributed to the Berkshire Hills towns. I want you to know that we worked on hundreds of models of how to structure the financing of this. We looked at how Berkshire Hills does their financing. We looked at Southern Berkshire, how we do our financing. Neither worked. We had to find a place in the middle that would be fair, and that was the word that we kept using. What's fair for all eight towns? Nobody wins here. Nobody gets the cream of the crop here. We all have to be willing to think about this as one district for the good of all the children. And so that's where we came up with this 2% safety valve to help us do the budgeting. This next slide talks about that $100 million new school. And I'm going to go through this slowly because I really want to make sure that you understand it. So let's just assume that we're spending $100 million on the new school. And Lucy's given you some other ideas of, you know, just do the math to figure out if we spend more. But let's just talk about $100 million. As we were having the discussion about who pays for what, there was a lot of discussion about the fact that Southern Berkshire doesn't want to pay for Berkshire Hills's new school. But Southern Berkshire children are going to be receiving something by building that new school and having the opportunity to expose themselves to CVTE programs and more opportunity for diversifying their education, their opportunity for building friendships. opportunity for diversifying their education, their opportunity for building friendships. We felt that that deserved Southern Berkshire being willing to assume some portion of this cost. Our kids will take up about 20% of that building. We could have said the split would be 20-80. What we did was we said that we would do the split at 90-10. So of $100 million, the Berkshire Hills towns will pay the 90 million and Southern Berkshire will be paying the 10 million. Then we have to subtract, or let's just say we get to subtract what the state's willing to kick in on this $100 million project. The state automatically guarantees a base of 48.52%. That's, that's their average, what they give a community for building a new school. They also offer a 6% regionalization incentive. So what we decided to do was to take that 6% regional incentive and apply it directly to the Southern Berkshires' apportionment. So that takes our share of spending from 10 million down to 6 million. Because without us, Berkshire Hills wouldn't get that.
Four.
Oh, sorry, four. Four. We subtract the 6 million of the 6% to bring it down to 4 million. Berkshire Hills wouldn't get that 6% regionalization without the merger, so it makes sense that it go to the Southern Berkshire towns. Since Berkshire Hills is assuming 90% of the expenses with the 48.52% discount, that brings their costs down to $41.48 million. So you can see that there's some concessions that went on here, some solutions to how do we fund this. The annual debt service, according to this chart, is calculated at 3.25% for 25 years. The Berkshire Hill towns will be assuming $2.45 million in annual expense divided by those three towns. And the Southern Berkshire towns will be assuming $236,000 divided by our five towns. It's a very small amount in comparison to what Berkshire Hills towns will be paying. Now, I've been hearing a lot of conversation about what if the interest rates are 7%? And that bothered me. I'm a banker. I'm a former banker. I'm a numbers girl. So today I made a phone call to a gentleman by the name of David Essenthal, who is a financial analyst from Unibank, who the town of Sheffield uses when we have to finance things like fire trucks. It's probably the only thing we've ever financed is a fire truck. So I saw, I called David today and I said, if we were to do a $10 million bond today, what would the interest rate be? And he said, well, it depends, of course, on how you structure it. 30 years is going to be one thing, 20 years is going to be another thing. Somewhere between 4 and 4 and 3/4%. I just wanted you to know that it's not some 7 or 8%, which, which had me a little nervous. It's a, it's about a 1% more increase at today's interest rate. So let's go back to the, to the debt service, right, of 2.4 million to 236,000. Southern Berkshire has its current debt service on the roof and boiler project. That runs our towns, I think, between 3 and $330,000 and that's going to run until 2033. So from 2033 to 2038, we're going to be doing a shift of 1% per year from Berkshire Hills to Southern Berkshire, where we end up with a shift in the 90-10 to an 85.2 to 14.8% shift. Southern Berkshire will pay a little bit more after we retire our debt. And when I say a little bit more, our debt service at that point will be $397,000 divided by our eight towns, but, excuse me, by our five towns dependent upon our, our property values. Did I get that right, Jake?
That's great.
That's the first time I've ever described that myself, so I just wanted to make sure I got it right.
So this is a repeat slide that you.
Yeah, so this is a repeat slide of what Lucy just showed you. And I'm the one who actually did the math and said, geez, if it's cost us 150 million. For me, I think I live in an average home. You know, I'm willing to pay $45 a year to give the kids a little bit more in, in education opportunity. So that kind of covers the, the methodology on how we got to where we are with the projection for how we're planning to do assessments.
Thanks, Nadine.
Get that back to Colin.
So we're going to, we're moving towards closing up with Colin and John, right?
Yep.
Great. So Colin and John.
All right, I'm, I'm going to read from my notes here because it's chronology and I'm, I always get my dates mixed up here. So, you know, one thing, we just talked about the building and, and one thing that keeps getting repeated in, in, from the people that are opponents to the, this idea of merging the, the school districts is, well, it's, it's only about Berkshire Hills needing us so they can build their building. And, and that's not, that's not true. That's not what it's about. The answer, so to answer, you know, I guess, to answer the question, you should take a look at the history of the eight towns talking about merger over the last 70 years. The original planning board in the 1950s actually recommended that Great Barrington and Stockbridge be part of our very first district. That didn't happen likely for political reasons. Fast forward to the 80s, in the face of significant enrollment declines, sounds familiar. The two districts conducted a merger study in 1987. Again, sounds familiar. The initiative fizzled out in the face of a projection from the opponents that K through 12, K through 12 district enrollment in the two districts would stabilize. That was wishful thinking, as it turned out, and of course, it turned out to be very wrong because here we are again. The possibility of merger came up again in the 1990s, this time led by superintendents. Again, that initiative fell apart in the face of school opposition and the districts pursued essentially independent agendas. 2009, an independent consultant was retained to examine the same question. That consultant identified economic and educational advantages to merger similar to those that we have identified. Again, school official opposition resulted in that recommendation dying. So our board's conclusion that we could do better together is, it's not new. But what is different this time around is the amount of time and resources that have been devoted to this study, the amount of data and research that has been developed, and how far our board has gotten in the work, including hammering out over the last 10 months a full regional agreement, as you heard Lucy speak to. What is also new is the unique opportunity presented by the states agreeing to pay for about 55% of the cost of a new high school for a combined district that would have greatly, would be greatly enhanced. And also that's going to provide our vocational facilities and programming, or this facility so that we can do the programming. And lastly, what's happening this time around is the decision is up to the voters. It's not up to the superintendents, it's not up to school committees, and it's not up to select boards. So remember, when we started this conversation tonight, it was the select boards that asked for a recommendation. Our committee put that recommendation together, which is that we recommend that the two school districts be brought together. And now the decision is up to you, the voters.
So I want to address two points quickly. One is the question of uncertainty about the future and the second is a question that came up at the Mahawi about whether or not there could be a, a second vote. So as far as uncertainty is concerned, in my opinion, there's far more uncertainty for these two districts separately than together. And frankly, far more uncertainty in the next 50 years for Southern Berkshire than Berkshire Hills. I don't think we should ask our future high schoolers especially to live their education constrained by a dwindling peer group when we can vote to provide them with a more expansive and diverse student body with more opportunities, not only to learn, but to learn together. It seems very risky to me to ask them to continue to learn apart. We can't afford to foreclose on a vital and vibrant new high school for all of them because we're talking, we're not talking about five years or even 10, we're talking about 50. In such a new high school, our students will feed off each other, learn from each other, grow stronger together. As I said before, I'm, I'm really almost most enthusiastic for their opportunity. I don't want to see 100 high school students trying to go it alone in the southwest corner of South Berkshire when they can create for themselves a learning environment and experience that will better help them to meet the challenges of their future. So the real question for me comes down to this. Do we vote for a separate future of diminishing educational choices for a declining peer group or a sustainable future together with an enviable menu of comprehensive, robust, robust educational opportunities, including an integrated vocational and technical component to enable them to succeed in tomorrow's ever more competitive world? And remember, one of the things that, that educators always talk about that's essential to VOTEC is if you can have the regular school and the VOTEC school on same campus, you can combine a lot of things that you can't otherwise do if you go to a straight VOTEC. Okay, so the question, the question came up, will we get a second chance to vote? And it was discussed at the last presentation and some people said, well, you know, we want to merge, but we don't want, we don't want to, we want, we don't want to vote for this merger. And of course, we've had three years for everyone's input to tell us what they would like to see in this merger. And now at the 14th hour, this is what we're hearing. So I want to kind of straighten that out. We could vote again theoretically, but I think it's unlikely. So if one town votes no, it's, it's theoretically possible that the other seven towns could re-present the agreement to those voters in that one town and ask the town to vote again. It's theoretically possible.
It's hard to theory.
It's theoretically possible that if there are seven towns vote yes and one votes no, that we could go back to the one town with a second vote. But joining later, let's just say we go with a seven-town district, okay? Then joining, that's, that eighth town, the difficulty of joining later is very, it's very complex, right? First of all, they'd be, they'd, they'd have to enter the district under the provisions of the agreement and they would, they would have taken themselves out of the whole process of being part of the formation and the running of the new district up until that time. So it's way more complicated if that eighth town doesn't come now. If two or more towns vote no, and Berkshire Hills builds without us. And our students may choice out in greater numbers to be part of that new high school, but there, there may not also be any room for them. So they may want to choice out, but there's going to be no room for them. If Southern Berkshire towns wanted to join Berkshire Hills, I mean, you know, leave Southern Berkshire and join Berkshire Hills, let's say Alford or Monterey, which is, which are the two towns closest, or even Egremont, wants to say, look, I voted for this, you guys voted it down, I want to be, my town wants to be part of Berkshire Hills, I want to move, right? This, it would be extremely complicated to do. So they're basically trapped because DESI is not going to say, oh, let's take, you know, one or two towns that have a lot of value and move them out of this district into Berkshire Hills. They're not going to allow that because Southern Berkshire won't survive without those two towns. Berkshire, Southern Berkshire won't survive without all two towns, all, all five towns now, and we don't know how long that's going to be anyway. So the process would be almost impossible. We're going to be stuck. It's going to be done, practically speaking. So I just want to remind everyone that our enrollment will continue to decline, our costs will continue to rise, and the chance of making this crucial leap into the future, it's really now or it's just going to fade away. And Berkshire Hills will go it along, they'll build a new high school, and they'll thrive. Finally, I have an even greater concern for those who want to vote no on this. And my concern is that those invested in the past and in the present will vote against this future, but a large voting bloc that has no personal stake in either the past or the future will not stand up and be counted on this critical venture. In other words, there's a whole bunch of people who, let's just say, aren't here tonight, haven't been watching, they don't have a vested interest in voting no, but they don't, if they don't have kids, maybe they don't care enough to come in and vote yes. In other words, they, they can't think independently, come in and make the effort. And with, with those voters not engaged, I think there's a, there's a real chance that the status quo will prevail and it won't be for 10 years until we realize what we've done and we won't be able to undo it. So, you know, my biggest appeal is to all those voters out there who could come in and vote for the future even though they don't have a personal stake in it. And I'm hoping that they will come forward and lead us forward into the future together.
Thanks.
I'm going to be really quick because I just want to add to what John said because he, he touched on a couple of points that I was thinking about. First of all, I want to, we want to thank all of you who showed up and those that are watching on TV and that are on Zoom. It's not lost on us that this room is mostly empty. And that's, I think, what, part of what John's saying, we're very concerned that people aren't, aren't necessarily paying attention or if they're paying attention, they're not, they're not vested, they're not feeling that, you know, they can make a difference. What's really scary to me personally is if the vote is no on this, then what? There is no plan. No one has a plan. Even the opponents to this merger don't have a plan. The status quo isn't going to work. It's, it's somewhere along the way, it's going to fall apart. And I'm not talking about just Southern Berkshire, I'm talking about both districts are going to struggle. So that's why all 24 of us feel very strongly, well, actually, there's some people that did, did not feel strongly. So the majority of our committee felt strongly that, that this, this is the right time to do this. I ask that you all go educate yourself on this. We'll, I'll answer any questions after this meeting. And also, eighttowns.org is the, is the website with all the information of our work. You can even read through all our minutes and see how we discuss things. And as far as the voters that, that are not here tonight, that may be interested in this but just aren't finding, finding the time, please talk to your neighbors, make an announcement in your house of worship this Sunday. Any way you can get the word out, please get the word out and, and get people in here to vote, okay? Because the more people that vote, you know, the better it is that we understand what the answer is. So that's, that's it. So thank you.
Thanks.
So, yeah, can we bring that over? I mean, we've got a, a lot of really great questions here and we want to answer every single one of them. So I know it's been a long meeting, but if you can hang with us, we're going to respond to all of the questions that you've asked and there's some really good ones. So apparently at last night's meeting in the town of Egremont, the folks running that meeting stating, stated that enrollment is not going down in pre-K through middle school or high school. Questioner isn't sure which it was that was stated. That obviously contradicts the data we presented. Do we know what data they are referring to and where their numbers are coming from? And Jake, you want to take that? I mean, bottom line, the answer to that question is no. I wasn't at that meeting. The, the numbers are incontrovertible. You can go on the DESI website yourself and see that overall district numbers in both districts have declined by staggering amounts over the last 23 years. But I think what is being presented by some is that in the. But I think what is being presented by some is that in the pre-K through third grade?
Five, I believe.
Pre-K through five, including enrollment numbers that we haven't yet seen for this year. They haven't been released to us yet by the Southern Berkshire Regional School District. I think the claim is that there have been a small increase over the last seven or eight years, is that right?
That's right.
Why don't you speak to it, Jake?
No, I appreciate it. Listen, we just report data from the Department of Education, it's really that simple. I know that there's different ways to look at data across grade bands. You can look at it pre-K, K through five, middle school only, high school only, and we have unpacked it a lot of different ways. And I will acknowledge this, if you look at various grade cohorts, K to 12, there's ups and downs, right? We know that this year's senior class is really small, but that is a bit of an anomaly, it's a bit of an outlier. And so I think if you compare grade cohort to grade cohort over a particular time, you might not see, you might see that variability. But the bottom line is, the numbers we put up on the screen are the numbers from the department head, and they are accurate. The October 1 numbers have not been released yet, we should hear relatively quickly. My gut is that you're not going to see a dramatic change one way or the other, but, you know, until we hear otherwise. We are using the data which is reported by the district to the Department of Education.
Yeah, and based on the numbers through 2023, which are the official numbers that we have for enrollment, student enrollment even in pre-K through five in Southern Berkshire went down, was about 3%, as I recall. And if you do K through five, which we think is the more accurate way to do a comparison so that we have an apples-to-apples comparison from the year 2000 where pre-K was very limited, when you look at K through five up until 2023, the decrease was much more significant, I think it was over 7%. So, answer to the question, no, I don't know the source of their numbers. We know the source of our numbers, and they're the DESI numbers, and they're reported on the website, and you can confirm their accuracy for yourself.
One of the questions that we heard that Lucy referred to earlier, and I really appreciate everyone hanging in there today, this is tonight, I really appreciate your attention, was related to OPEB. And I'm going to ask Bill Vogt to come up, he's a member of the board, and just respond to this question of, is there an unbalanced distribution of liability in OPEB, which Bill will explain, between the two communities when they come together?
Great.
You can have my seat.
There you go.
My goodness.
You're in the hot seat.
Yes, yeah. I wanted to talk about OPEB, and some of you may not know what OPEB is, so I'll define it. At the public forum last week at the Mahawi, one of the opponents to this combination raised the, or made the claim that the regional school boards' debt numbers were inaccurate because they didn't include the element of OPEB debt. OPEB is O-P-E-B. It's Other Post-Employment Benefits. It's a contractual liability that the school districts have to their retirees other than So the claim was, we're excluding OPEB debt. The problem is, there is no OPEB debt. OPEB is not debt. OPEB doesn't have an interest cost, it doesn't have a maturity date, both of which are characteristic of debt like bank loans or bonds. It's merely a liability carried on a balance sheet reflecting a municipality's or school district's future obligations to its retirees. It's calculated periodically by a third-party actuary who analyzes the numbers and ages, among other things, of retirees and determines if the OPEB liability is sufficient to make payments to them during their retirements. When the Southern Berkshire and Berkshire Hills school districts come together, their OPEB obligations, like all other district obligations, will be added together, as will all of their assets. The OPEB obligations will be treated just like other operating expenses and assessed according to our operating cost methodology. That methodology is largely based on relative student enrollment, so the Berkshire Hills towns with most of the students will be paying most of the OPEB obligations. It's a serious topic, though, so we engaged an outside expert on OPEB liabilities to make sure we were not missing anything here, that no district would be benefited or harmed by the merger when it comes to OPEB liability. The experts assured us that there would be no benefit or harm to either district. Our expert consultants concluded that the merger was a wash on OPEB liabilities. Neither district will be disproportionately harmed or benefited on OPEB liabilities. Here's what they wrote in quotes. "Our assessment is that neither Berkshire Hills nor Southern Berkshire OPEB plan will be materially harmed or benefited by the merger. Both plans offer similar benefits to retirees, and neither entity has prefunded any portion of their OPEB liability via an OPEB trust." So, OPEB is a non-issue on the question of whether we should join together.
Thank you.
Sure.
Great. Chair. Hey, Lucy, can I just make one more comment about the declining enrollment real quick?
Sure.
Colin actually covered some of this at their last meeting. So, it's not difficult to argue about projections because they're statistics. So I understand people's impulse to ignore them, deny them, but there's a more common sense approach here. It has become almost impossibly expensive to live here. Everybody knows this, right? The economy is terrible. Let's face it, there are very few jobs in Berkshire County that can support people who need to spend $700,000 on a home in some towns, and the living expenses of food and transportation and energy. We're not going to have an influx of families ever again. The population in Berkshire County today is the same as it was in 1920, okay? We've gone back 100 years since 1970 at the peak. That trend is going to continue. Inflationary trends in the Berkshires are going to continue, particularly in South County. If you want to live in Adams, North Adams, it's a little different. But in South County, it is almost impossible to live here. All of us here who already have homes and maybe don't even have a mortgage to pay off anymore are really extremely lucky. Everyone else that's coming in now is buying houses with cash, sight unseen, and they don't have children, and many of them don't even live here full-time. So, let's be honest about the likelihood of increasing enrollment in the next 10 years, 20 years, or 50 years. It's not going to happen, it's just that simple. Thank you.
All right, let's jump into some other questions. I'll try to check a few off, all right? If I can. During the building of the new school, where would the Berkshire Hills Regional School District be studying their students? And that's a little bit of a difficult question to answer, but I'll do my best. The design of the new building has not occurred. We will be, you all will be voting on a commitment to join as an eight-town district, and then over the next 10 to 12 months, designs for the new high school will occur. And interestingly enough, the Mass School Building Authority has approved a two-track set of planned designs, one for a three-town high school, which will house around 485 students, and one for an eight-town high school that will house around 620, all eight schools. That school design, construction, and footprint could manifest in a lot of different ways. It could be a heavy renovation, or it could be a full construction of a new facility near the existing facility. So the best examples I can give you are the last two high schools. Well, I'll give you three examples, three high schools done in the county in the last, I guess, eight years. Wacona was the last one. Wacona built a new high school next to their existing high school. My two twins were seniors when they moved into the new building, literally walked across the street into the new building, and then they demolished the old building. So the kids stayed where they were, and that could be the case. Greylock took a different approach where they housed the kids in a wing and then did a massive renovation and then moved all the kids into the new wing. So again, they housed the students mostly on campus. There could be a situation in which there may be some staging that could end up in kids going to other schools. We did that in Pittsfield when we renovated the middle schools, and we sent the students into existing schools for a temporary period of time, and that could certainly manifest with some of the high school kids coming to this facility while that was being built. So I'm not giving you a great answer, I'm giving you a set of options that will be driven by the design ultimately of the high school and where they decide to put it.
Okay, there are a lot more high school construction questions. You're on a roll, go for it.
So, post yes vote, where will high school students attend school during the new school's construction? Exactly where the school will be located? Again, I think I just answered where they'll be. Where the school will be located is likely on the footprint of where the current Monument High School is. They've got land, as is the case, as was the case in Dalton, big multi-acreage footprint, as was the case at Teconic where they built the school next to the existing school. So it will be likely on that site. I think that answers that question. Is there a situation, set of circumstances, that leads Great Barrington to not build a new high school but instead renovate? So, my sense is that they'll be studying both full construction and pretty significant renovation. So you're going to likely, they're in the process right now of hiring the owner's project manager, I think they have already hired that, and they're in the process now of hiring the architect, who will be developing a set of designs that follow the educational planning, which will occur over the next, you know, 10 months. So there certainly is a situation which is a pretty significant renovation. I want to just preempt another question, which is the vocational program question. There are two vocational programs at Monument currently, horticulture and auto mechanics. Both of those facilities are woefully underdeveloped in terms of what a contemporary shop and space needs to look like. So clearly, any massive renovation will be a lot of additional work to create vocational spaces that reflect, you know, contemporary facilities and requirements that the Mass School Building Authority has and Department of Ed has for running a particular shop. So I think that's certainly important to know. So I think I've answered that one. Will the present Monument High School be torn down? My answer to that is likely. But again, until the school is designed and they know exactly what's happening, certainly portions of it will be torn down. Who will pay for that? It's a good question, we don't get asked that often, but there are a set of costs that are reimbursable, and there are a set of costs that are not reimbursable. And if you've done any study of the Mass School Building Authority, you know that. One of the non-reversable costs is staging. So if you decide to rent a bunch of portable classrooms because you don't want to move your kids to another school while you're doing a massive part of the construction, you actually own that cost. If you want to make your auditorium bigger, the Mass School Building Authority says you can, you can, you've just got to pay for it 100%. The demolition, I believe, is a shared cost, so that's the way I understand that particular question, who would pay for that. MSBA is projected to pick up a healthy percentage of the cost of the new high school. Is it true that the cost could balloon to double the estimate? And is there a situation where the MSBA could pull their funding? There's a series of steps you have to go through with the Mass School Building Authority, and Berkshire Hills has cleared two hurdles. One is they've submitted a statement of interest and been accepted into eligibility, which is a 120-day process that they just completed. After eligibility, they go into a phase called feasibility, and that's what they're in right now. At the end of feasibility, based on the design and the cost, the Mass School Building Authority Board actually has to approve the project, as does ultimately will the voters. So I suspect that the MSBA carefully follows along the progress of a project and only allows it to move forward if they feel confident about the direction it's moving. I suspect if a district came back, and I can't imagine an architect or engineer would do that, with a $500 million project, the Mass School Building Authority would say, "Probably not." Okay? But I think, you know, the MSBA has some model school designs that they like to see built in, things like lab spaces, you know, sort of contemporary learning spaces that are flexible, where you can do small group instruction and large group gathering. Those are kinds of things that they like to see built in. Would a new high school, if there was a no vote, and a new high school was built smaller, so for 485, would that limit school choice as things are now? And the answer to that question is yes. All right, what else you got? Oh, someone asked a question about, "How'd you come up with 100 million?" That's a great question, we get asked that quite a bit. So, and I always say, go to the website and read my memo, or read the memo, and that's not fair.
I always tell them not to say that.
She says, "That's not good, don't tell people to read your stuff." So we worked with, we looked at, I think, four or five different angles on how to get to that price tag. Some of the work had been done by Berkshire Hills in developing the first set of designs that they went through, and they were projecting somewhere in the 80 to 90 million dollar range. But we also looked at recent MSBA projects, we look at cost per square foot, which are different for academic spaces than they are for vocational spaces, we look at projected enrollment. You can go on if you want to look at the memo and read it, but the range was, I think, 88 million on the low end and 125 on the high end. We settled, I think ultimately, at 100 million as a good, what we thought is a reasonable estimate.
And that estimate was based on an assumption that we were building a new high school for 700 students. And the MSBA has come back and said, "If you combine, we think the rate enrollment number is 620." So the $100 million estimate was based on an assumption we're building for 700 kids, we actually would be building for 620. So I think that gives us a little more comfort on that one.
Maybe just to hear a different voice, I know we've had some questions around the sustainability of programs, educational programs that currently exist at one high school or the other, and how those would play out in a combined high school. And I'm going to turn to Susan, who we dialed up to sit in for Deb Phillips, who is actually the chair of our Education Quality Subcommittee, just to address a couple of those questions.
Thank you also for being here tonight. You're probably all wondering why I'm sitting up here, since I've been so quiet. But, yes, I was on the Educational Subcommittee, and there has been, I just want to preface this, I know Jake had a specific question, but there's been a lot, I have heard, and I think it's very hurtful language, that for some reason, the Southern Berkshire programs are not valued. programs are not valued. There has been no understanding at any point that what's going on in Southern Berkshire is any less important than what's going on in any other school district. The programs that Southern Berkshire offers are terrific. The programs that Berkshire Hills offers are terrific. The idea that we could expose our students to all of them is paramount, in my mind, as a parent, to be able to give the biggest opportunity to our kids. So to bring the best programs that are in both districts and offer that to all of our students, what could be better? There's also been language about, "How do we know that's going to happen? That's a hope, it's not a guarantee." Well, I can't imagine anyone sitting on a school committee that is not trying to figure out the best thing to do for the students. And to anticipate that we would be looking to tube a program that's beneficial for our students is just beyond my realm of comprehension. But the piece is, you know, again, part of what Lucy said, is there's been naysayers that said, "Why doesn't the regional school district agreement address curriculum?" Neither of the regional school district agreements for Southern Berkshire or Berkshire Hills address curriculum. That's a school committee's job. So that's what will happen. The school committee will be formed, and they'll be looking to address the best curriculum, the best programs that we can offer to our students. So I'm not, did I, did I answer the question, or do I want me to go on a little further?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's talking points about specific programs, early college being one, as a reason to vote no, because those programs would not be continued.
Sure, I can address that.
Sure.
So the early college program, which is fabulous, that is a grant program, and that will extinguish in three years under the current grant that's in place for Southern Berkshire, which is probably about the same timing as when the new district would be up and running. So I would expect, if the program is still available, that our school committee, the new school committee, would apply for the grant to continue that program. There are also other options for early college through BCC, Simon's Rock, those partnerships, which we expect would continue on. There's no reason why they wouldn't.
Thank you. There was a question about what the vocational programs will be, which somewhat piggybacks off of what Susan said. Those programs ultimately will be determined by the new school committee, and that's a process that also involves the Department of Education. We heard recently that, well, there's also this problem of you can't compete with your neighbors and have the same vocational program. It's actually a mileage distance, if you can imagine, the Department of Ed sets for having replicating programs. And it's nine, I think it's 20 miles, Frank, 20? And I believe that we're 19 miles from Teconic. Yeah, right, which requires some sign up, but there also is an appeal process, which you can work through the Department of Education. And in fact, Berkshire Hills just did with their early childhood program, which was approved as a third program at Berkshire Hills. So currently, they have two, as I mentioned, horticulture and auto mechanics, and will be adding early childhood. We had an advisory group that met over the last year, composed of some, some great invested folks from the community that represent different industries and occupations, represented Regional Employment Board, workforce, the two colleges. And we studied the question of sort of what are the sweet spot for vocational programs? And there's a variety of considerations in terms of where do you have partners, what space do you need, you know, what do kids actually exit with in terms of credential and the ability to, you know, earn a living wage? What are the needs in the region, right? Where are their, where are their emerging needs? And for sure, we heard over and over that the construction trades are a massive area of need in South County. And so we're very confident that there will be some configuration of carpentry, electrical, plumbing, HVAC as part of this, but ultimately, those decisions will fall to the committee to figure out what the additional programs will be. We also look at, you know, issues of access and sort of the traditions of gender, although the Department of Ed doesn't necessarily want you to focus on that. They want non-traditional genders to be in various shops. They want females to be in the construction trades, and males to be in cosmetology and early childhood, which tend to lean one way or the other, right? But we, that was another consideration that the advisory group looked at. And that report is also online, that you can look at in terms of what the findings were. And I think we came up with a short list of around eight to 10 that seemed to be highly promising, but ultimately would be the discretion of the committee and ultimately with community input. Hope that helps a little bit.
Jake, could I just follow up on that with regards to the vocational programs? So if the, if the proposal is voted down and we do not have a merged district, Berkshire Hills will go forward with developing four, likely? Four vocational programs? If any student from Southern Berkshire applies to go to those programs, it costs $26,000 per student to the town to go to that, that program. So that's not under the choice regulations, that it's a $5,000 cost? So that's a $26,000 cost per student, and that gets assessed directly to the town that's sending the student?
Thanks.
Okay, so there's a question, the regional agreement appears to curtail school choice during the transition period at the beginning of the merger. Can you address this? So I did address that in my comments on the regional agreement. That's wrong. That was a piece of misinformation that was given on September 27th. Actually, there's a lot of choice during the transition period, so you can keep your child in the school in which your child is currently enrolled, or you can send your child to the school that is in closest proximity. So I hope I've answered that question. The website for the Southern Berkshire Regional School District states that the current student/teacher ratio was seven to one. This seems incredibly teacher-intensive. This low ratio was cited by no proponents as desirable. Is there a projected bottom limit to this number? At some point, will faculty need to be cut? And so, I mean, that's a great question, because I asked that question of those who are opposing the merger. At what point does the high school just get too small? Is there no point at which the classes are too small? And from some, I hear the answer, "Yeah, that's right, there's no point at which the classes become too small." And that's not consistent with the research, right? And Jake can speak to that. But, but really, really small class sizes in the high school is not the optimum class size for high school students. Elementary school students, you can make the argument, but we're not changing the elementary schools. We're talking about having larger classes in the high school, and a larger class in the high school allows for a more engaged class, a more robust class, more diversity in the class, and just more energy in the class. There is a point below which a high school class just gets too small. You want to speak to that some more, Jake?
Yeah, I think the other thing I'll just say is that, you know, the published ratios are a little deceptive, because we have a whole section in our educational quality in which we unpack class size. And so ratios can be highly influenced by, you know, classes that are incredibly small. And that doesn't preclude that there are individual classes that are larger, right? You then add all the staff together, all the kids together, and you come up with these ratios that the Department of Ed publishes that, in my opinion, are not overly helpful. An easy way to look at class size, I, we actually do this, is, you know, you look at your average ninth and 10th grade English classes, right? And so you look across your English classes and say, "What's the average English class look like?" That, to me, is an important number, because when you overload English classes, your English teacher is going to have a lot more challenging time providing feedback, written feedback on written work to their students. So we unpack that in the report, and you can look at that. And both school districts have really relatively small class sizes, and that would certainly be the intention going forward, too. There is a connection, a link to a white paper that was written for the Department of Education specifically on the topic of what's the sweet spot for class size? And, and there's research that certainly supports that, as Lucy points out, around having enough students in a class to do group work, to do breakout work into small groups, to have productive dialogue, but not be so large where you're lost, like you are in a freshman year of a biology class at UMass, right? Where you have 100 kids sitting in an auditorium, we certainly wouldn't want that. This is an interesting question.
Yeah, this, this is a brain, a brain twister. So if two children, this is the choice question again. So if two children from the same family choose to go to different elementary schools, will we be transporting to both Great Barrington and Sheffield for that single family? And I think the answer to that is, it depends. So if, if there is a child currently in an elementary school that is not closest to them, under the regional agreement, they have the right to stay there, right? For others who want to go to a school not in closest proximity, if they're not already there, then it's subject to availability, and they may have to provide their own transportation, depending on what the bus routes are. So it really depends on the child and what bus routes we currently have going down that road, as to whether or not, they could each, subject to seat availability, go to the school they want to, but whether there will be transportation for both of them really depends on whether we've got buses going on that road to the school they want to go to anyway, unless, of course, they're already in that school that is not in closest proximity, in which case, we are going to provide the transportation. So, interesting hypothetical there.
Just maybe, maybe a couple more, and then maybe we close it out, because we're over two hours? I don't know what.
Well, I think we should answer all the questions and agree.
I'm not avoiding questions. Trying to read, read the room a little bit. Is there a maximum cap in construction cost for the new high school? Why is this not included in the agreement or stated in the materials? So as part of an agreement, we don't determine the cost of a high school. We only determine how capital costs are apportioned out to the communities. So the apportionment methodology is in the agreement, it's the process. The price tag will be determined during the feasibility phase and the design of the high school, which is why this, the community will have a second opportunity to vote on whether or not they're willing to borrow and pay for a new high school. I would imagine if the high school came in at some outrageous price tag, that the communities, and you saw what the communities will be paying, particularly in the three Berkshire Hills towns, would, would not support that. Of course, I'm speculating, but, so it wouldn't be appropriate to put a price tag in an agreement. And then the, really, the insurance policy here for you all is you get a second vote when you decide to approve or not reject the debt when it comes forward. And that will have a very specific price tag on it, which will be agreed upon by both the designers and the Mass School Building Authority.
So this is a really good question, I think, and we thought a lot about this at the beginning of the process, which was, you know, why'd we, why'd we decide we should have one integrated high school in one location with both academic and vocational programs, rather than put vocational in one location and academic in another? And that was a really deliberate decision, and it was based on educational value. So do you want to speak to that?
And putting the two, the vocational and academic in the same spot? Sorry, I'm reading a question while you're.
So, yeah, so the question we've been asked before, and I think what this questioner is asking here is, why'd we decide to put both together in a single location, rather than put, for example, vocational at Southern Berkshire and academic at Monument, or vice versa?
Yeah, sure, thank you. Well, I mean, one is just the efficiency of having a couple of facilities where you've got to duplicate things. So we even heard sort of the suggestion that, "Why didn't you build a vocational high school at sort of a centralized location?" And, you know, clearly, that would be a whole nother set of projects and repeated common spaces and cafeterias and all that stuff, which has to go into the building. But the more compelling argument is that you want this interplay between vocational and academic, where students are moving and flowing between these. It doesn't, you know, when you have Chapter 74 vocational programs available, you could potentially have access to those programs for kids who are pursuing an academic pathway or, you know, a direct-to-college pathway. So, you know, if you're an engineer, it's not a bad idea to spend some time in a machine shop, right? Because if you go to RPI, they're going to make you do a course in machine shop in your freshman year. So the point, I guess I'm getting at, is that we really see the integration of vocational and academic as important, as something that's of value. And then also add in this idea of creating pre-vocational experiences for middle school students, so as they're preparing to go to high school, they're, they're starting to have access. And I think you've got, you know, a nice little continuum from your K-8 program into your high school.
I think it's really important that we not be segregating our students according to what they may choose in ninth or 10th or even 11th grade, because we want to have that fluidity. We want students to be able to be in a vocational program, but also be taking calculus and, and be together with kids of diverse backgrounds, and really have a larger cohort from, from which they can choose their friends. So if we divide up the high school into two campuses, we're working, we're really working contrary to that objective, which is to create a larger cohort where there can be a lot of fluidity between vocational and academic, and there can be lots of choices for kids, including choices in trying to find friends. So that's why we thought it was really important to have it together on a single campus.
Great. I mean, that looks like an opposition question, actually, this one here.
This one?
Yes.
Yeah, for those on the committee who have voted opposition to the merger, I'd like to hear what they think about the declining enrollment numbers in high school and the data that show that a three-to-one ratio of choice is happening from Southern Berkshire to Berkshire Hills. And, yeah, that, that comes down to, I think, the question that was asked over there, what is the Plan B? Because what we hear from the opponents is how much they love the programs at Southern Berkshire, and no argument there, right? They're great programs here, but that doesn't address the enrollment problem, right? Notwithstanding all these programs they have, you saw the graph. The enrollment continues to decline. So what is the Plan B for declining enrollment? We've yet to hear what that plan is.
There's a question about, it's an interesting question. There was talk that Messina Bus Company refused to sign off on the current plan to bus merged district students, true with a question mark. If so, what does that mean going forward? I, I don't know that there would even be a reason to have Messina sign off on the current plan at this point. I mean, there are two current transportation contracts in place with the two districts, which I think are both with Messina Bus Company, sort of different sides of the operation. But maybe what the question here, too, is a point that was raised by Marie Messina at the A-Town Select Board, that she had some concerns over our independent consultant's evaluation of the routes. We wrote a response to that, and I just want to be clear that there are two transportation reports on our website. The first transportation report was authored by me with my team. The first transportation report was authored by me with my team, and was informed by Marie Messina, who was an incredible resource, incredibly willing, and actually did all the routing to help us to understand. And the basic conclusion was, you can bus the kids based on seven scenarios we set out, with really no additional cost and no additional equipment. Rides will go up for some who are further away, and rides will go down for some who are closer by. Our operations subcommittee, led by John, asked the question, might it be wise to get an independent consultant, rather than our provider, to evaluate this situation, this transportation situation? Which then led us to secure Alliance Education, Richard Bree, who actually has consulted to both districts on the topic of transportation. And he ran, using software, a whole set of routes around the scenarios that we gave him, including getting kids to the Great Barrington, high school kids of the Great Barrington campus. And then the subcommittee challenged Rich with a question, could we reduce travel time? Is there any way we could reduce travel time to forty-five minutes or shorter for everyone? And he sort of scratched his head and said, I'll work on it. And what he came back with was, with modest and strategic investment in equipment, he believed that that was possible. And that is actually the result of that report. Marie challenged elements of that report, which is really what she called out in the eight-town select board meeting, as, these are not routes that work. And she listed a series of routes, which she sent to us, we sent it back to Alliance, and they wrote a follow-up to her critique, which is also on our website, which you're welcome to review. And some of those critiques were, hey, the bus won't fit across that bridge, or we probably don't want to stop the bus on the highway and have kids go across, right? We want to pick up on the same side that we're driving, that direction, so we don't have kids crossing the road. Those are legitimate questions and concerns, right? So those were raised and have been addressed. And certainly, all the busing on a year-to-year basis gets reconfigured by the districts, typically in the middle of summer, and we kind of sprint right into the start of the year, as we try to figure out transportation. So, you know, you have two reports and a response that you can certainly, you know, review, that I think all say kind of the same thing, which is, you can definitely bus kids at around the same cost that you are right now, and we believe, with some strategic investments, you can contain ride time, or shorten it, with some exceptions, right? We know that the kids in Ashley Falls, who are high schoolers, are going to have a longer ride to Great Barrington than they would to Sheffield, and we would never deny that, right? Thank you. That's an interesting question.
What will be the selection process for staffing the new school? So, by the new school, the new high school, is that what we're talking about? Because of course, the elementary and middle schools are all staying as they are, right? So I guess the question is, what about the high school? Our projection is that there will be one superintendent, rather than two, right? And the process for selecting the new superintendent will be the same as with any school committee, right? They will be looking out, they will be advertising, they will be interviewing, and the new school committee will select the new superintendent, and then the new superintendent will decide on that superintendent's school leaders, just as the case with any new superintendent. In terms of teachers, our projection is that the reductions will happen over time through attrition. We are not projecting layoffs of any significant number. Can I tell you for sure there'll be none? No, I can't tell you that, that will be up to the school committee. But we all know that we are in a teacher shortage across the nation, we're holding on to teachers, we're trying to retain teachers, we think bringing salaries up for the Southern Berkshire teachers will help us with that retention, both recruitment and retention. So we're not projecting that there are going to be massive layoffs as a result of combining the two high schools into one.
Perfect.
What else do we have?
I'm sure that's the last one. It's more of a town vote, right?
Yeah, does not indebtedness of a town take a two-thirds vote? Not sure I understand the question. So there are those two methods I talked about. One is majority across the eight towns voting to approve debt, and the other is, the way it really works is, the school committee approves the debt, and then any town can hold a special town meeting to take a vote on whether or not to approve the debt. And if a single town says no, the debt doesn't get approved, and it has to go back to the school committee. John, do you have anything to add on that question?
Nadine and I have only been doing this for like twenty-five years, of course, can't answer it definitively, but I, we believe that the acceptance of a debt is a simple majority at town meeting, and a simple majority on the ballot if you want to do a debt exclusion.
Right.
Right? Everybody's nodding their head, Julie?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Hey, what do we know, right?
So.
There's only a hundred years of experience in cities.
I think we've gotten through all the questions. I have to really thank everyone for staying so late, really appreciate your participation, these were great questions, we're really happy to have the opportunity to answer them. Please go vote, however you're going to vote, please go vote, we really need to know where folks stand in each of the eight towns, and please, talk to your neighbors and ask them to go vote. Really appreciate it, we're going to close out the meeting now. If you've got more questions, come up to us, we're happy to stay later, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Motion to adjourn our.
The motion, we adjourn.
Okay, the Community Outreach Subcommittee meeting is adjourned.